...call regular meeting of the Plain Township Board of Trustees for July 9, 2013 order. Everybody stand and join us safely.
Gladly just to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. First, uh, order of business, the agenda is before us. Is there any additions or deletions by fellow board members or staff? Hearing none, the agenda will stand as presented. First order on the agenda is the sheriff's report, and I'll turn that over to Lisa.
Thank you. Item number one will be presented by Mr. Iasino.
Yeah, I received a call about speeding on Beverly, I think 55th and Snyder. You know, we've gotten that phone call probably every other year, every year, once a year. So I put a speed buddy out there for a couple days, and I gave the sheriff's office a copy of it.
What's the average speeds?
They were well below 25, but they're fluctuating speeds.
I used to live over there, right at that corner, so.
Thing that probably slowed down a lot there, huh? Things that slowed down a lot.
Oh yeah, that's probably why the averages lower. Okay. Go to, uh, does anybody in the audience have anything for the sheriff? Are they here to get the little guy in the back corner there? No, not me.
Recruit.
Recruit. Okay, we'll go down and finish business, Lisa.
Thank you. Item number one is the fire dispatching contract, so I would like to turn that over to Sheriff Meyer.
Thank you, Lisa. Good evening, everyone. We've been working back and forth with this fire EMS dispatching contract, and I think there's been a few things we've changed over the last few weeks, and hopefully everybody's, all the legal folks that I had a chance to look at in between going back and forth, I think it's pretty much where everybody has a comfort level with moving forward on the dispatching project that we've been working on for right over the number ones. But I'm here to ask, are there any questions you might have related to that?
Not a question, it's a typo thing. And paragraph eight, is that supposed to be make and maintain, or is it just supposed to be maintained? What are we, what are we agreeing to do there? Is that make-maintain?
I don't think we're making any, so it's probably.
Well, so.
So get rid of the word make?
Well, we'll have to.
Okay.
Redact make, lose anything else.
That was the only typo I picked up, and then there were some changes made today that addressed the software issue and some of those.
Okay, so are there any other questions?
As far as, just from, you know, one of the things we previously moved out there was just the CAD, the CAD software, and the commissioners said they were gonna potentially bidding out CAD, CAD software upgrade. Does that impact any of this and how our services deliver and support fire?
I'm not too concerned about that. I mean, they're looking at, they are doing a bid on CAD for the county. I don't really know where that's at. It's under the direction of Mr. Caccato, Scott, and so, you know, if something would happen to change in that regard, that would be umbrellaed under everything we're doing at the sheriff's offices. We would be impacted by that as well as you, so it would be part of something that the commissioners would decide to put that into place. You would be a better factor of that.
Then outside that, do you want, from a training aspect, you know, everybody's up to speed out there and now?
No, not that I'm up to speed. I don't want to give you the false impression that everybody's up to speed. Listen, let me talk a little bit about this training issue. You know, it's hard for me to sit people down and train people when they don't know what direction we're going. The piece that you're willing to put into place tonight, this contract, that gives all of the folks direction, okay? This is the piece that everybody's been waiting on. In the meantime, we have been talking to employees, and I know there's been some conversations with your employees as well, to acclimate people into the direction we're going. With this in place, I can assure you that as soon as even tomorrow, the people will be sitting down side by side at these dispatching pods and cross-training. The average time probably to train a brand-new dispatcher off the street, if I took Lou, it might take a little longer, but aside from that.
I'll agree with that.
The average time is probably sixty, on the outside maybe ninety days. We're talking about training people who are already experienced in this field. They're learning some new skill sets. It's like learning something new that you already do. And so, the training curve is not going to be that great. We're already, you know, working with, I know the assistant chief and Rob has been working with our IT guy on some things, but we're working on, you know, emergency dispatch procedures. I think they're gonna have, I think Chuck has a disk for us, that we're gonna be able to train people on. You know, the actual sit-down training for folks is going to be a lot less than what we anticipated if somebody's coming in brand-new off the street. I have a pretty high-level confidence that this will be work out just fine. I'm not gonna sit here and tell you there might not be a hiccup here and there, but we're gonna work through that. And I think the plan that maybe we have in place as we have worked through this over the past few weeks is that we're gonna have some safety net. We talked about some of your employees being able to be available for a period of time afterwards. I'm looking at hiring a couple of your employees who certainly I would call experts in their field, and so they're gonna be able to sit right down next to the experts in my field, the dispatching and the police side of things, and work together to work through these things. So if you could envision this, and I know the chief and I talked about this, he was concerned about having somebody at that fire board. So if you could envision one of your current employees who in a short period of time is going to be one of my employees, sitting at that fire board with one of my police dispatchers sitting right next to him, working together through this training period to acclimate themselves to the nuances of each other's arena. So it's not gonna be that difficult. It's gonna take a little bit of time. You know, we're, I think, what's our target date on this? August 1st? August 1st? If we have an anticipation that everybody will be trained to the fullest capacity by August 1st, that's probably far-fetched, but certainly people will be able to efficiently do their jobs. We still have the folks that are going to be, if we came by me, and I think we talked about some other, putting some other pieces in place that will help kind of bridge that gap until we get everybody up to speed a hundred percent.
Hey, Rob, do you have any questions or?
I think he answered it all.
And Chief?
Yeah, I mean, as the sheriff mentioned, you know, my concern has always been making sure that we're doing the best for the system, Plain Township regarding calls and taking them, getting that guys out of the field to respond to those calls. Moving forward with all this, I agree with the sheriff as far as operationally. They're acclimated, they know that system, they know how to operate the system, you know, what we're probably lacking more than anything is administrative things that those people will be doing. Our people obviously are familiar with, and as you mentioned, Chief Schallerberger is working on, and I know the secretary's gonna have their ready probably tomorrow, the information, administrative SOGs and SOPs that we have, you know, so making sure that they did those out there, so you look at those first and then forward the funds with your staff.
And that's, that's something that we can, as soon as we get those, we will immediately start to familiarize our folks with those procedures, and that's basically what it is, administrative procedures that you follow. Some of them are somewhat common sense because they sit right there and they see what goes on every day, but we want them to have them at their fingertips. I might add to the conversation that I hired another dispatcher yesterday who was a former dispatcher at Sankom, and so I know this body looked at Sankom for dispatching in the past. They dispatch fire EMS, so we have another person come to the table as part of our resources to have experience in fire EMS dispatch.
So my concern is making sure that you streamline this, make sure that we're doing what we need to be doing to make sure everybody's tuned to operationally and administratively, and we're not gonna be jeopardizing anything to do off the field during calls on this thing. I think the plan we have in place, if we see, I think sheriff, if we see it necessary to extend, you know, that time, we get closer in the month here, I think maybe it's something we can look at that time.
We can certainly take a look at that, and I think you have some options on your side of the counter, some things we can do to give you some comfort level. You know, I've shared that with some individuals on the board, but I think we're gonna be fine. I'm not gonna tell you that there might not be a hiccup here or there, but I don't think it's gonna jeopardize any safety. I think we have well-trained staff in place to deal with emergencies, and I think as a partnership, because I look at this more as a partnership than me taking over an enterprise, and I look at this more of a partnership or a township. I have an expectation that you and your deputy chief, your assistant chief, and your battalion commanders are gonna assist in this transition to keep this, listen, I'm not coming here to fail. We are going to succeed in this venture, and it's gonna be positive for the fire department and the EMS, and it's gonna be positive for the citizens in the community at this point in township.
I mean, you know, for the record, the whole idea of this starting beyond the cost savings, which is maybe substantial, getting out of the dispatch business was the fact that our police and fire will be dispatched out of the same location, basically. I asked a question when these conversations initially started, and I asked, what would that mean as far as transferring prop calls, things like that? If there would be a loss in the transfer, I'd be told that the 911 dispatcher literally could scream across the panel.
They wouldn't have to scream. They're that close.
They're that close.
They could just tell the next person what's going on.
So from a safety standpoint, 360 degrees, please fire any EMS. All those calls going in the same location, could save considerable amount of time in the event of a serious emergency that would be life-threatening or otherwise?
Well, I think, I think based upon, you know, the direction that we're going here, I think that there's obviously efficiency in what we're going to be doing. And if you look at models across the country, and I know the chief has, and I'm sure that's why, you know, he even entertained this discussion with the board, is the model across the country is less dispatching centers. You know, there are only so many peacehouse permitted in each county, okay? And I think there's, not only there's economies to be gained, there certainly is efficiency in government in having a central dispatch location, so. I believe you're going in the right direction, and if you have any doubts, all you have to do is you can Google it and look what's going on across the country. Even in the state of Ohio, I believe you have examples. You know, I had a lot of previous experience with the Marx system, the assistant director of the highway department of public safety. I worked very closely with them, and you know, the direction is that you have to collaborate. The dollars for dispatching and communication are so significant, the investment is so significant, that to be effective, we certainly, and to reach economies, we certainly collaborate together.
And the other, if the 911 centralized dispatch goes forward, which I think you have a strong belief it will, you know, someday, so do I, there will be willing to be down to one or two dispatch centers. The advantage is that we've already transitioned.
Right. You're ahead of curve.
We've already transitioned, so. I wanna thank you, Sheriff, for everything you did to help push this along, speed it along. It's been a six-month process, it seems to be more like a year and a half, but to get to this point, but we're there. All we need to do is make sure that we continue to make sure that the training goes along as scheduled, and everything will be fine.
Well, I think what we'll do, and we're gonna assure that, and we'll maintain great communications with the chief and your staff, staff here. Again, I go back to, this is not an enterprise that I have an inkling to be involved in. This is something, this is good government, and it's a partnership with the township, and I do agree with you, Mr. Geovasis, I think that in time, the entire county may see the advantage of, you know, combining those resources.
All right. I'll move on, unfinished business number one, fire dispatching contract.
One second.
Discussion, hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes. Thank you, yes, Sheriff.
You're welcome. Let's go to new business, Lisa.
Thank you. Item number one, I don't see Jeff Bar here, so maybe what we'll do is make contact with him and move that to another meeting. So we'll move to new business number two, and that's the false alarms which we have before you.
I'll move adoption, new business number two. Second, discussion, hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
And that's the end of new business.
Thank you. Okay, we will go to the fiscal officer's report. Turn that over, Mr. Flex.
Thank you, Mr. President. Fiscal Officer number one is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County Ohio, to authorize the payment of the pending warrants in an amount of $213,759.12 attached here to and made part of the minutes.
Also move on, fiscal officer number one.
Second, discussion, hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Corrector.
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Thank you. Fiscal Officer number two is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County Ohio, to authorize payment of regular payroll in an amount not to exceed $220,000.
Second, parol. I'm usually second or two behind, so. Who moved on that? Mr. Leno, I'll second it then. Roll call.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer number three is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County Ohio, to authorize payment for the following medical claims as provided by benefit services.
Also move. One second. Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer number four is the financial report.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, we'll go to number five.
Fiscal Officer number five is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County Ohio, to authorize a refund as follows for overpayments for emergency medical services requested by Ohio Building.
Also move, second.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer number six is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County Ohio, to authorize the following transfers.
So move. Second. Any discussion, roll call.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer number seven is just kind of an FYI, it's a notice of the hearing for the liquor application permit for Caliber's Bar and Grill. It's got to say for.
It's July 21st.
We just stepped out, that's why we stepped out. We were talking to the sheriff and the new detective about getting testimony from them at this hearing. This is the one that's been rescheduled?
Well, they've changed the name.
Well, that's what's interesting, is what we've gotten for us is a transfer of ownership application, but it's still noting Caliber Bar and Grill, DBA Bogers Bar and Grill, when in reality the sign now is a Hall of Fame, some other.
Or it's a pub or something, I don't know.
And so we haven't seen that change, so that'll be the third issue to talk about at the, at the hearing. So I don't know what their, what their plan is, or if they have another, another kind of transfer of ownership coming, but it certainly will be addressed at the hearing.
And fiscal officer number eight is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County Ohio, to set a public hearing for the 2014 Plain Township budget on July 23rd, 2013, at 6:30 PM, and to further authorize the Plain Township fiscal officer to publish a notice of the public hearing in the repository at least 10 days prior to the hearing.
Also move. Second. Discussion, roll call, please.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
That will conclude the fiscal officer's report for tonight.
Thank you. Let's go to the administrative report, Mrs. Campbell.
Thank you. Item number one is a motion to list the bids for the Schneider Park restroom.
Also move. Second. Discussion.
There's no motion, I don't think there's a motion necessarily.
Oh, okay, is there? Oh, perfect.
Precautionary.
That was precautionary. There we go. Item number two is to, and this is a real motion, to award the Schneider Park restroom bid.
Also move on, awarding bids for Schneider Park restroom for Atlas, Moser Clark, and Feynman.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
Pardon me, sorry, this was just, so you know, this was a rebid. The bids did come back a little lower than the last time, which we were pleased with. Rich LaRocco did review each of these bids, as did Mr. Iasino and Mr. Edinger.
The next part is, is that Atlas is a township, or township residence, so supporting township resident such business owner as a general.
Yes, so we were happy that they did come in lower. When you rebid, you always take the chance, so we were happy about that.
And the other thing is that this funds were, this building is being paid for with grants and donations.
That's right. It's all reimbursement grants, so that is very good news.
No tax dollars. Okay, roll call.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
And then the next motion is to, oh, to sign contracts. Actually, I don't believe, yes.
Also move. Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
And Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
And finally, I have a resolution to authorize payment to Worsley Brothers Landscaping for the June composting.
Also move. Second, discussion. Point order, Lisa, going back to the previous motion, when will construction approximately start on that?
Well, we will schedule now that the bits have been awarded, a pre-bid meeting, pre-construction meeting, hopefully next week, and construction can begin almost right away. I know construction is set to be complete within 60 days, so it'll move fairly quickly.
So that'll coincide almost with the completion?
When they get to the concrete, they get to your concrete, you just hold it down at the.
Yes. We will have them down there. Save us some money.
Okay. Roll call.
Uh, Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
And so ends the administrator report.
Thank you. Go to the fire report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, item number one is the monthly report. Item number two is a resolution, a change order from Hev Electric, an additional work amount of $2,853 in excess.
Also move, fire two. You'll second that? Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Thank you, Chief. Go to the road report, Mr. Francino.
Mr. Chairman, Ohio, tonight is the monthly report. Did you have any questions on that incident?
Just, I want to make a quick comment. I happen to be out in the bottling area this past weekend, and I did get compliments from a couple individuals on, I know winners pass, but that area is extremely happy and proud of how good a job our road guys do, but then one of them said something, there was a stripe or something he had to paint on a molar, and they said, I'm telling you, you gotta turn around like that. I know it's something little, but.
It was spot marked, it was not pleasant.
Yeah.
And just sent a very nice thank you from the residents.
So just wanted to reinforce that.
That's the area you sent me to, I love it.
No, I've never sent you there. King's Creek was your domain.
If I may, real quick, Joe, I called you last week regarding the concerns from a couple residents on Firestone and Easton, and you had your guys that day cutting. He actually wanted to write some type of a letter to the road department thanking them for their, you know, he was like, right on, right away, and now, you know, who knows? You might have saved an accident because it wasn't hard to see it on there. And those residents come and said they were complaining that they wanted to thank you. He did want to write a letter, and I said, well, you wore them off, at least unexpressing that they were very appreciative.
Some situations, you just can't wait, call the county, and wait. It's a major area. I'm prompting you.
Yeah, it was a good move. He wanted, for that resident. Joe, I noticed that you guys are marking the streets for the company that's gonna be doing some of the grinding and stuff, are they getting ready because they must start marking something?
Well, actually, that's a lot, that's a large crack, and we're grinding them out and basing them in, so when we do come to pave, they're already set up, and we won't have that shortage again in the sinking. So we're ahead of it. I had a meeting last week with North Stark, and it's probably gonna be the end of the month before they get started, so we have some time to get ahead of them fixing these few things that we want to get prepared.
So paving will probably start August?
Yeah. That's my thought.
Thank you, Joe. All right, let's go to the zoning department.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Somebody's gotta do something. The first item on underzoning is the monthly report for the month of June.
New construction stuff, still seems.
We're still doing, we're still doing well, we have nine, we're running after the progress, yeah. We're hanging in there.
That's really gonna take off for sure. And next, Sheriff.
Yeah, one golf with electric departments, they just finished completing paving on the extension of what would be Stone Crossing going out through for the phase of lots of the orange and these holes there.
I gotta drive up through there. Is that connecting out towards Easton, or is that just up in the wall?
No, Easton.
Easton.
Yes, there was still line.
It's gonna tie in, well, it can also, isn't it?
Well, where's Parco, yes. When they do, when they do the new, another, this, this stage has already been platted for the construction business, and when they.
Next payment is at the horse park.
Correct. Okay, and then.
Thank you.
Zone number two, we have six abatements for this evening, actually, two actually are on the same parcel. One is a vehicle to be removed, and then the other, same parcel was, ran the nine weeks.
Move adoption of zoning two A and B since they're dealing with the same parcel? Well, two, two A through F. Two A through F? One second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Haas? Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
And number three, we have payments for seven nuisances that have been corrected.
Also move on, zoning three, A through G. I'll second those. Any discussion, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
And zoning number four, we have a resolution to hire the firm HBW Environmental Consultants to perform asbestos surveys, and this is part of the Moving Ohio Forward program, which otherwise owns the land bank. They have a campus office, and we did receive quotes from two other contractors.
Also move on, zoning four. Second, discussion?
Just as a point of clarification, the expenditure related to these asbestos surveys will come out of the money, but that, we, the hundred thousand dollars that were committed earlier this year, that is remastered also by the SCLR, that's the larger city.
Correct.
So it's not above and beyond.
No.
It actually comes out of them.
Right, we have, this is money we'd already had to set aside. And just as a part of clarification, HBW is also being utilized by Regional Planning Commission for various asbestos services. Zoning number five is a...
Roll call.
Kind of, sorry.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Sorry, just wanted to get enjoying the weather. Zoning, zoning number five is a resolution to hire Lori Walter to provide property tunnel searches, once again, is associated with the Moving Ohio Forward program.
Also move on, zoning five. Just a point of clarification, they already do use this individual.
Yes, Lori, Lori provides our means, means searches right now for our nuisance payment.
Roll call.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
And zoning number six, now that we said we'd hire these people, it will authorize payment for each, for the asbestos surveys and the property tunnel searches. It's, it's a blanket pretty short, it'll be opening the amount of $21,000 for that purpose.
Also move. Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
And Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen, that concludes the voting for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Let's go to Parks and Facilities, Mr. Edinger.
Mr. Chairman, Parks and Facilities, item number one is going to be the monthly report.
That was two.
Okay. Parks and Facilities, number two is going to be the purchase of a Skag Bird Tiger mower.
Also, also move on Parks number two. I'll second it. Discussion?
Just as a point of clarification, what was last week?
Yes, last week.
You had the equipment brought in, staff, staff demoed it, on actual...
Used them on the properties, they've gone out, they've done the work. This particular unit here, we were not able to demo this exact unit, but we have a Skag Bird Tiger right now. The only upgrade with this is that it's going to come with a diesel engine, which will powder through the tall grass on the nuisance properties, and we'll have a second gang unit, so we'll be able to get in and get out a lot quicker than just using the unit that we have now.
And just as a point of clarification, because this was something I said, I said when I, when I stopped in to look, I don't know what your guys' thoughts are, obviously we've got some old, worn-out equipment over there, and some of it's going to end up getting traded in, and some additional stuff that's being brought forward. I mean, recommendation I, I had, and I don't know if it's his department, you know, his team, team runs, can we dedicate a piece or two of equipment to these nuisances? Because they beat, they beat the hell out of these pieces of equipment for their staff to, you know, take something from a nuisance bay of a property and then have to come into our parks. You've got downtime, and, you know, just reprepping, getting it, it's got to be, it's got to be cleaned off, because we're not going to drag all the weeds and garbage off of these properties and bring them into our parks and all the other facilities.
So what do you recommend, is we keep a couple of the old pieces and dedicate it to one of these?
Yeah, we're, we're...
And actually, the, the next item on, on the agenda, we can discuss when we get there,
we'll, we'll help with that, transitions going back and forth.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Parks and Facilities, number three, is going to be the purchase of a Ventrak Turbo Diesel tractor. In total, that takes $26,752.50 from Cutter Power Sales.
Also move on, Parks number three. I'll second that. Discussion?
This is actually the unit that'll be great for nuisance properties, because with this, we're getting what is called a tough cut mower, which with the Ventrax is going to be just unhook and rehook attachments as you need. They've got a whole array of attachments that will, I'm sure will be...
And utilize.
Yeah, yeah. And what we can do is, after a property, you know, come back, just unhook that tough cut, and hook up to our finished mower, and off to another property with no, you know, no downtime from, from the equipment, and array there, what have you, between properties, we can get the nuisance equipment ready to go out for the next nuisance property.
This is good sense. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Okay, I'm the law director. That covers a portion of the agenda for public speaks. Does anybody wish to address the board at this time? All right, that'll close public speaks. We do have, well, that guy on Concerns Trustees, the Inn at Whitewood Village.
Guys, I just, I asked Lisa to add this, the only reason, it's not a concern, it was simply some comments were shared, I went over to the open house they had, I don't know if it was a week or a week and a half ago.
Two, two weeks ago.
And the McLean family, who runs, runs, and so, so forth, I was talking with Roger and Drew, and they, they were the points I thought were just important, you know, emphatically excited to be part, part of the township, you know, fabric, and, you know, helping us fulfilling part of our master plan with, you know, additional, additional business, diversifying housing options, but what really stood out to me, and you know we don't hear this all this often, was how easy Plain Township, the entities were to work with, from fire and the, you know, the inspections and so forth, and, you know, being really proactive, and educating them to the zone, to the zoning office, you know, especially Stephanie, you know, when they said, hey, we're just running a few minutes, a few minutes behind, can you stay just so we can keep, keep this rolling? And she did, and she did, and I think that reflects well on the township as a whole, so I think it was worth red noting, because what they said is, is they continue to put up these facilities throughout the state in different locations. One of the number thing, thing, one of the number one things they look at is, okay, the location, then two, how easy it is it to do business with that political subdivision, so whether it's a township or a municipality. And they said, you know, if they've got a political subdivision that they know has a reputation for being difficult to do business with, they will not even, you know, move forward with the project. And they said, you know, if Plain can be a role model for other political entities, and how to do business, do it in a timely manner, and so, so forth, it's something we should be hanging, hanging our hat on. So I just thought it bears, you know, sharing on the record.
That is, that is very nice.
Okay, is anybody, Albert, have you got anything?
No, thank you.
Nothing? Okay, that'll close Concerns Trustees. We'll go to the approval of the minutes for June 25, 2013, regular meeting, and I also move...
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
And I will also move the special meeting with the joint work session of the Plain Township, or Plain Government School Board, June 19, 2013.
Second.
Any discussion?
Anthony, I have just one thing, when we were talking about the internships, I'm not, if I said that we used internships, that may have been a mistake, my account was that we haven't used internships in the past.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that would be the only, that'll make that change.
Roll call.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
And Mr. Lino?
Yes.
There's a need for an executive session. Be hereby resolved by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County Ohio, to adjourn the executive session at 7:42 PM from this regular meeting of July 9, 2013, as authorized under lottery bias code 1212.22G for the purposes and consideration of 1A, 1B, 1D, 1E, 1F, and 3. And that is appointment of a public employer official, employment of a public employer official, discipline of a public employer official, promotion of a public employer official, compensation of a public employer official, and a conference with the law director on the retained counts concerning pending or imminent court action. Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.